What kind of support you need?
Need animals?
You're right.
Good wishes with Jordan.
I've already told you, if it goes to ten, we're gonna call for a special work. Do it in December. That'd be a four-hour meeting. You're only a few seconds.
We're live.
Call to order the Vermont County Council meeting for November tenth, twenty twenty-five. Please stand with your pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call. Mr. Costello.
Here.
Mr. Somerville.
Here.
Ms. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. James, the president. Mrs. Furry.
Here.
Mr. Bose.
Here.
Mr. Wheeler.
Here.
And you. First item we have this evening is our approval of minutes from our October twentieth meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, comments, or concerns on that?
Make motion we approve the minutes for October the twentieth.
A second? I have a motion from Mr. Wheeler, a second from Mrs. Furry, to accept the meeting minutes from October twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye. All those opposed, state no. Enter. Next, we have a few additional appropriations this evening. Our first additional appropriation is from the commissioners. It is coming from the improvement fund, and in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars. This is for the ambulance building purchase in Kyuga, the cost of the inspection appraisal, closing cost. The commissioners could not be here tonight. I know RJ sent us the email with the inspection report. Said he also spoke with Julie, and Julie was in favor of it. She knew there might be some additions for bedrooms. Neil, Rick, I know you both looked at it too, correct?
Yes, just briefly. I mean, we were there, what, thirty minutes or so?
No more than forty-five.
But, I mean, everyone knows what we're talking about. I think we talked about it too with the meeting committee hearings.
In addition to this money, for that remodel?
For what?
For the room addition.
Um, I don't know if the addition will be in there. I haven't negotiated a price yet.
I would assume not.
The appraisal is not quite finished yet. The appraiser did think it would come in and close to the price that was asked. I was told. The appraiser has looked at it, just hasn't finished the report. Based on the asking price, the appraiser felt like his appraisal would come in near that, from what he's seen.
Well, with us just getting the report today, I haven't had time to read it. I'm not, I guess, in position to approve this tonight, kind of like Kelly says, like we have a little idea what an issue for lifted quarters would be too.
I tried to go through the inspection report. I think I, I don't know when the email was sent, but I think I opened it at like five o'clock when I got home. I just briefly scanned it, looking for the things that I saw on site when I visited the site, just to see if they were in there. It was pretty thorough.
Yeah, it looked like it was thorough, but I noticed.
I obviously didn't agree with it. An inspector of any sort, but, at least on buildings, but. Like, one of the things that I think that I noted, at least in the report, was that there's no heat in the two bays, which we knew that. I mean, that was made clear to us at the time, but, so, here we are, you know, it snowed today, so we're definitely, that's like a priority issue immediately, so that's, you know, five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars immediately to fix that with a unit furnace of some sort in there, which have to be done. But, that's just one thing. I mean, I don't know what else in the report. I assume the commissioners got the report as fast as they could physically get one. I mean, you gotta schedule that. Building became available, you know, on some date. And I believe, you know, they kind of got an idea to do that, and then got the inspection. We asked for the appraisal, which you say is not, or, that's not done?
No, they, I think they said it would be done maybe even in the next week.
I thought the last appraisal was for like seventy thousand on that, just what time ago.
On that building?
Did somebody in here see that?
I don't think it was an appraisal. I think it was the property deed card on it. I don't know what the exact amount was on it, but.
There were.
I don't think it was an appraisal.
Was what the card showed for purchase price? Is that right, from owner to owner?
Yes. At least, that's what I recall.
And that was a few years ago, was recent?
Twenty nineteen, I thought.
I think that was also before any updates were done to the building.
Right, that could be. I didn't get to see the report either. It may be interesting to see if it needs a new roof, et cetera, find out what's gonna cost.
I didn't read, so, the report, as you guys are familiar with those just as much as I am, but, you know, there are kind of like little symbols that mean this must be repaired, this must be inspected further. The symbols mean different things, but I did note that the roof, there were some, nothing critical, but yet, there were some things they said this needed to be fixed, like more material, and it's, it's a, it's a roof that has the liquid asphalt on top with the rock. Typical commercial, or structural roof. And there were some, just, you know, probably some maintenance issues more than anything, more than defects, but.
It had pictures.
Yeah.
It was just a couple of little sections of the roof, and the GFI. There's some GFI outlets that need to be replaced.
Yeah, I mean, there were.
I don't, I don't think it was.
I don't want to say there were quite a few things. There were some things. I mean, I suppose it's probably, you know, what's the difference between this and the last time we, you know, well, I don't know, all of us, we met to discuss the other building that was commissioners had considered. This is, you know, is it the same? Is it different? It's not the new building, that's for sure. I mean, that's kind of the path that I believe the other, you know, we, we didn't look at the other building, or, or we did look at it, but we didn't, we didn't ultimately end up buying the building that they were in. I think the idea was to push a brand-new ambulance station forward.
This, this building, from our conversation that we had for the rest of the council, is a viable option, better in my mind than what we had looked at before. And definitely has potential to be a very good building for us. It did house service trucks, line trucks, bucket trucks, probably of some sort, something, it has the capacity to hold our equipment and more versus the other one that we would be parking our vehicles outside. And the, what we call lay-down area that Public Service Indiana used, I mean, we, we have lots of room for other things if necessary. And inside, it's just recently been redone. It looks great, very functional. They used it as a residential, so it, in their mind, it was a bedroom there, but we would need that changed.
Yeah, so the, so for anyone wondering, that's listening, it's, what was like the seven hundred block of South Division is the location. It was a former, I've heard, you know, Public Service Indiana, also AT&T or Bell telephone garage. It's a two-bay garage that was an office.
It's a commercial building.
Yeah, it's a commercial structure built in early nineteen eighty, somewhere in that range. It's a brick block building, large commercial bays, overhead doors, et cetera. It looks like a commercial building. It looks like a building you would park trucks in, and it had an office, and, you know. So it's, you know, it's different than the other by a lot. I, I think that it doesn't matter now, but I think it was for, when it was originally for, well, the last time it was for sale, I think the ambulance service at that time had tried to buy it, but then they dismissed it, or something like that, so. Obviously, a different, or the ambulance service prior thought it would be all right, so. You know, is it? I don't know. The inspection report has a lot in it. And, you know, everything that's in it, you know, some of it's critical. You know, some of the things they noted, like, oh, the electrical circuits had double taps or something on the breakers, which is not proper. The heat for the bays, the plumbing, there were some things about the plumbing that needed inspected, further checked, there were, you know, and additionally, so it has a, a room, so right now, it's like a one-bedroom, because it is, you know, a person bought it and used it as a residence, and did a lot of nice things to fix it up. So, it's like one room that serves as the bedroom. There is another room that serves as the kitchen slash laundry slash everything else.
Right.
Because there's only really two rooms. And then there's the bathroom, shower, restroom type facility. And again, as you can imagine, some kind of a commercial building, built in the eighties, it's like a school, you know, it's block walls. It's nice. It was, it was for what it was. And so how does that work for an ambulance station? Well, the, where you park the trucks is great. It's big, really nice doors, block wall, you know, concrete floors, just needs heat. It's got nice floors. You can wash the trucks inside plenty of them. The floors have drains, all these kinds of things. But the inside, you know, it's not what we need currently. So it would need additional money spent for, I think we, Rick and I, and Brent, Erst, or?
Brent, Louis.
Yeah, Louis, thanks. We, we all met, because we are an ambulance committee, which, you know, we scoped out what it would take to get new buildings at the time, what do we need, all that stuff with the ambulance committee, and we looked at it and thought it had potential, but it was gonna require money, and how much money? Because what you need is two, two bedrooms added and a storage room at a minimum, and we figured it'd be like added to the north side. So you gotta build on some more foundation, frame up two, two bedrooms and a storage unit room, put materials and supplies in that they need, and everything else would work out as far as the space is available. It's not bad. But that's gonna be, what, a hundred thousand dollars? I don't know. I, I don't know what it costs to build, you know, I would say at least a hundred dollars, just to put some, a basic foundation down with some walls and.
When the government's involved, it could double that.
All right, say two hundred thousand dollars, and I doubled it. But whatever it is, so when you look at the asking price, and you start adding that up, and all the repairs that we need, you know, we're, it's, it's a chunk of money. No doubt about it, so. But it's, it exists now. So that's just, that's, that's my take on it. It's a little long-winded, but that's my take on it.
So I hear like, so it sounds like it's a viable option. However, are you wanting then more of a cost estimate for the additional stuff in with it? Is that what?
I, I think, I think, I think we should read through it, just like we did previously, and understand what we're about to purchase or not purchase. I think three of the five ambulance committee members did think it was a viable option. Definitely something to pursue. I think we could have told you no, but we believe this is very good, so we need to pursue it. So that's what we're doing, but we still want to be we need to be frugal with our money, so to speak. And I, I don't, I know we're asking for two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand dollars here for inspection appraisal and closing costs. Closing costs mean maybe just a little bit something different to me, but I don't see purchase price. So, I assume that's included here.
It's typed. The rest of it was added.
Building purchase.
It says ambulance building purchase.
Yeah, it's typed right under.
Oh, okay, I'm reading.
And then the rest was.
The additional amount was handwritten.
I mean, this is, you know, this, this goes back a long, this goes back twenty-five years with all this, you know, it's been a twenty-five-year struggle, if you want to call it that. To me, it's been, to find permanent locations for our ambulances, it's been a big deal. It's, it's kind of ramped up since, say, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when Lit Public Safety Tax was passed, and money started to become available to do something with this. Then it becomes more of an issue when the counties start to be much more involved in the service. It's no secret, I served on the ambulance committee. I'm a hundred percent in favor of brand-new stations. I, I thought that was, you know, where we were headed. We definitely spent money on blueprints. We had agreements with property owners in, in locations, well, not written agreements, but pretty close to that, with property owners. We, you know, the architectural and engineering fees were spent, meetings were held. You know, the ambulance service is so important that I feel that it needs, you know, buildings that are gonna be here until I'm long gone, until the twenty-second century, I guess, or so, you know. Can they last a twenty-one-hundred? Sure they can, you know, they're brand-new. No way, you know, there's no way they can't. So that was our goal, and also location. It was super important, that, you know, the committee felt that the locations were ultra-important. And that was all, you know, the best-case scenario that we came up with, and I, you know, we were going down that way. But we're here now, and that's, doesn't seem to be the way that the commissioners are taking. That's just not. I haven't heard, I haven't had a meeting or anything about it discussing the ambulance station. Grants come and go. Could have got one, maybe. We could still get one, maybe. Maybe we'll get one for another station and just buy this, do what we can with it. I, I don't know.
When I spoke with RJ on the phone, that was kind of the way they were going with the south.
Yeah, well, I mean, at one time, we were going to two brand-new stations. I mean, it changes with the winds of politics, I suppose. The next group of commissioners may not want to do anything. I, I don't know. But here, we're here now, and the ambulance service, well, I'm not even gonna say the ambulance service, I'm gonna say that the public, you know, could be said to be public suffering. Not, not necessarily suffering, but in a way, you know, the ambulance is not in an ideal location right now. We know that. So time is of the essence. I'm sure the owners are wanting to sell it. They may have other buyers, I don't know. A lot of questions. It's a serious issue, so I guess we all have to figure out what we want to do.
If you have another two-hundred thousand, getting it, add it all fixed up, you're at the cost of a new station.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, I mean, but do we know that for sure? Because, and I thought about that.
It's like seven hundred thousand for a new one.
I mean, we've never, I guess my point is that I don't know what the new one's gonna cost, because I don't think we've ever seen actual numbers. We've seen estimates, which are assumed to be proper. Yeah, it's not a big bid out.
We've got estimates, but we've never bid it. So, I mean, that's still the unknown. Until you get to that point to bid it, you don't know.
You could have four-hundred thousand dollars wrapped up in this real quick.
Yeah.
No doubt. I mean, I, I don't have any doubt. I don't pretend that that's not gonna happen. It's gonna happen. I would bet. So we have to be prepared to, to say, you know, four-hundred thousand dollars is what the total cost. Once you fix the fence, patch the driveway, fix the garage, whatever it needs in the report, you're gonna be at that, plus the additional room that's needed, and future maintenance, because it is a, what, thirty-five-year-old building or something like that?
Forty-five, really?
Yeah, I, I think it was built in nineteen eighty. I don't know.
I, I would say earlier, but I could, it was there when I graduated in seventy-six.
And don't get us, or don't get me wrong, the building is, is of the highest quality when it was built. I mean, it was, you know, Duke Energy or Public Service Indiana at the time, Bell Phone, whoever built it, they did not waste, you know, money on stuff like that. They, they spent it wisely, but they built stuff to a high level of commercial use, so it was a, as nice of a building as you could expect for that size. It was no corners cut. It's not a cheap structure, so. But it is got some, you know, it does have some age on it, and could it last fifty more years, probably, and I'm sure it could with maintenance, so.
What's the purchase price?
No, there's not a set one yet.
Okay.
They're waiting on the appraisal to come back.
So do they have to pay for the appraisal with this additional?
Yes. Had I been able to read through this and understand what, what we have, if I had twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I'd be ready to probably say, I'll approve this, but I haven't read it, and I don't want to read it.
We don't have a, I mean, I'd like to have.
We don't even know what the appraisal is, for sure, but.
You know, and it's, it's all, you know, it happened so quickly, you might say. I mean, it's not quick, but it is in terms of.
It's good to have all this information. I appreciate everything we got. I'm just not ready.
So, if it's tabled, what information do you feel like we still need from the commissioners?
Just the appraisal and.
The cost for remodel would be nice.
Yeah, but I didn't spend money to do that. We want to spend more money, but.
To get bids?
Well, yes and no.
I don't know. I mean, I, I guess if you want some, some kind of drawings or something for bidders to look at, it would cost something, but, I mean, if you just get prices, it would be, you'd probably have to have, I mean, if it's over a hundred fifty thousand dollars, I don't know if they've upped that or not, or lowered that threshold, but if it's over a certain amount on a public works project like that, I would assume it would have to have bids.
I'm assuming we'll have to spend something to get that.
I think it should also be noted that, unless it was already said, and I didn't hear, the ambulance service has looked at the building, is that right?
Pretty sure she has.
They're on board with it, but have they seen it?
Message I got, RJ said he had spoken with her, and then she said she'd even put it in writing, that she was in favor, like she was okay with it, knowing that there'd probably have to be some additional space added for.
I'm pretty sure she's seen it.
Okay, so that, to me, you know, that holds a lot of weight to me. I mean, they're the ones that do it, and if they've looked at it and feel that it can, you know, be made to work.
And I agree with that. I, I think it, what repairs we do to it, it'll be functional, very, very nice facility for us.
I know that being at the, the very far north end of the county is not ideal for them, or the trucks, or the employees, or the time for everyone. So I'm sure that, you know, they look at it as a plus, definitely.
And it's important that we pursue something and get it available. Because it's been way too long for not having anything.
Yeah, I mean, we could have had a new building built by now. I'll just say it. I mean, I think we could have bid and had a new building built by now. We had the funds at least to pay for one. I mean, I don't know, I mean, I.
We did.
I think the thinking was, if we, if they bought this one, there would still be money left in the approval fund to have a matching for the grant. I don't remember how much the matching on the grant was. We only got up to so much on the grant too, so.
To build another station like the new, so the south station would be a brand-new station or something when that time came to pass.
I think that was the one they were wanting to have, maybe like classrooms into, like CPR and things like that.
Yeah, third bedroom. I think EMS wanted a third bedroom for like, they have a lot of students that participate, like college students that participate and have to have a room to stay there, or whatever, the hours they work.
I slept on the couch when I did my EMT training on the one down there in Clinton.
Yeah, so, so the, I suppose that, you know, if this one is purchased and it, you know, gets fixed up and it does the job, you know, it's just not gonna last as long as a brand-new commercial building, so just expect it, I won't be dealing with it. Somebody sitting here is gonna be dealing with another station up north sooner than we would have. Fifty years, twenty years, I don't know what the time is, but, so the one down south, if it's brand-new, you know, it's, it'll be, you know, grants available for that or something. It's, it's a long way off, though. I mean, we've got a set of plans for it, but I don't know that those would be the plans they would even use, or who would be the commissioners at that times.
So can we table it, and then if we need to act quickly, can we just get another meeting real quick?
Well, if we approve it, and then they can use the money to do these things other than purchase, is it, I mean, didn't we do that before? I mean, money was approved?
Well, so before, we had approved it, and then they had the inspection, and then we got the inspection afterwards and realized that there was a lot of things, like the cost.
So that's the same exact thing that this is? But.
That's what I'm saying, is, is to prove it one time, let's just be patient, hear, read through it, get the appraisal. Most everything we need to do.
Technically, since it's already been advertised, we don't have to wait the ten days. It'd be a forty-eight hour notice for a meeting, so.
So we could get the inspection report and have another special meeting to meet, to discuss that specifically? How long does the, as long as it was advertised, is there a time limit on the advertisement, or?
You mean?
If it's tabled?
Yeah, if it's tabled.
It's tabled.
I don't know if you can table something for months and months, I mean.
I imagine it'll be in the next month anyway, so it wouldn't be.
So if you table it, it just need forty-eight hours notice for a meeting?
Yeah.
They do have.
Like I said, I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward on this project. I just need time to read it and understand what I'm voting on.
I mean, I'm in favor of a brand-new ambulance station on both ends of the county, but it just, I have to deal with, you know, there's decisions that I make, and then there's, what are my choices, I suppose. I have choices and I make decisions, so these are my choices. So, and I don't have a brand-new station up north as a choice, as far as I know right now.
Well, if we had a brand-new station up north, we'd have everything that we wanted. Exact location, and everything that we wanted in the building that we felt like we could afford. We, we know that. This one is on so-called the opposite end of the tracks, could be a potential issue, but it's nothing that kills, kills the idea of moving forward on this.
Does, I don't remember, was the ambulance station that was originally in Kyuga for many years, was that on the, which side of the tracks was that on?
I thought it was at Rogers House.
East side, so they didn't have to deal with railroad issues, assuming that they were coming this way. There's always a wrong side of the tracks when you're dealing with a fire truck or something.
Well, ultimately, the commissioners will have to vote at their meeting to actually purchase the property, so if there are concerns, I mean, the commissioners hear those concerns too. It has to go through them.
I also don't know what the dynamic is with the owners, like, you know, what's been discussed with them. They're like, if they don't approve this tonight, then we're selling it tomorrow to Mr. Smith with all the money or something. I don't know, I mean, I'm just making.
Well, I guess, if, if we do table it, is, are there enough people willing to have a, a special meeting then?
Oh, yeah.
If we need us to, I'm sure.
Well, it's important. I will. I'll say I will.
I mean, that way, the commissioners can feel like confident that if they get all the questions answered, then we can have the meeting for them.
Well, on top of this, are they gonna come back with additional cost to add the rooms on?
Most likely. I don't see that covering the cost, unless all of a sudden that appraisal just is rock bottom. But we can also look at their budget to see what they have currently, and see if there's any accounts that we could pull from that they've already, aren't gonna spend for the year. Ron, you have a call?
Well, was there some additional funds that wasn't used? The commissioners, they had like fifty thousand available to them, they do part of this construction we're talking about.
One of the accounts that I know, like, sometimes doesn't get spent, is the unsafe building fund. I think they did pull a little bit out of that. But like, those are the funds that we can look at, especially since we're now at this point in the year, we can pull all their accounts and look and see if they have any additional money, so we're not, I mean, see if they're gonna spend it or not, and we could transfer it.
I would be hard-pressed to think that you're looking at two hundred thousand, these numbers I'm here throwing around, that on a room, or?
Well, it's gonna be three rooms.
What needs done with this building, though? I mean, it's a pretty nice building. The other thing, and maybe you want to cover it, speak, or?
Well, I mean, yeah.
The other thing, I've got a little bit of a problem with this, and I understand we had the, the committee and everything, Ron Donovan, auditor, is, I've run some of these numbers too, and seen. The other thing, I've got a little bit of a problem with this, and I understand we had the committee and everything, Ron Donovan, auditor, is, I've run some of these numbers too, and seen what come back from estimates, and moved it eight hundred thousand to one point three million for a building, one point three for one in Clinton, eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand, one here on the north end of Huga, and you guys keep saying, or how about being frugal and everything, well, I'm a taxpayer here too, and I'll be honest with you, if this building can be purchased for two hundred thousand, if you built this same building today and bought the property, how much would it cost you?
You're right, that's the reason why we need to keep moving forward.
This is something, and I know the person that owns it, and you're probably right, we didn't put a option to purchase here, or any money down on this or anything else, so I'm assuming we keep dragging our feet, that it's probably going to be gone, and it is a very nice building.
We're not dragging our feet, we're moving forward.
Well, we are, but we're, I've been here eleven months already, and we're moving forward, but we still not got nothing done.
Well, that's because the last six years we've had commissioners that wouldn't move forward.
And I'm also spending a few hundred thousand dollars compared to spending a million dollars on a building.
Why I'm too wrong, but the problem is, if we don't read this inspection report, we don't get the appraisal, we approve spending two hundred thousand dollars, and that becomes a complete waste of money, we look like idiots up here, I mean, I can't help it.
I fully understand that too, but I, you know, I'm just saying.
Have you read the report?
No, I haven't, no.
So if we.
I've seen it, but I haven't read the report.
The repairs report should be like due, like finished soon, in the next few days, so if we can get that, give everyone a chance to look at the inspection report, make sure we're not having a ton of fixes, something's majorly, whatever, and then if everyone feels comfortable with the possible financial additional amounts that, then we could have posted out the meeting for the twenty or forty-eight hour notice, and then, I mean, realistically, this time next week, we could have it all.
Just to answer the question, or the comment about the cost to develop three rooms, you know, two hundred probably high, hundred's probably not though, because, I mean, we spent, we, it was fifty thousand dollars was spent to renovate some rooms at a station to get this moving a while back, so if that was fifty thousand, I can see complete new construction being a hundred, I mean, to commercial level.
You're going to have to have an electric service upgrade for sure.
Maybe not.
If you've got things leveled up on.
I don't know.
Yeah, I know, well, that's just what I don't figure out.
That's not legal.
Okay, well, is there a motion to table it? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I second that motion.
I have a motion to table by Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Weir, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify with standing aye, all opposed, take no. The additional is tabled, then once we get the additional information, the report, and we'll be in touch with the commissioners, so that way we can schedule another meeting just to discuss that and get it done, that's the direction. The next additional appropriation this evening is from E nine one one, they're asking for an additional forty thousand dollars from their E nine one one fund for radio maintenance and upkeep, to provide dispatch, law, EMS, fire, and county highway with talk groups and emergency portable radios, and Mr. Jimmy Miller, Jr., is here, if anyone has questions for him.
Probably so, can you explain this a little bit more?
What's the fund, what's the fund balance compared to what we budgeted to, are we good?
Yeah, we're good for right now.
This is additional because it wasn't budgeted for?
No.
Great, yeah, this is just.
We didn't have a budget for it.
Yep, so Jimmy Miller, Brian, kind of EMA, and I'm wondering, so these are, these will be LTE radios, they work off of cell towers and everything like that, that everybody kind of remembers, Nextel back in the day, they kind of work off those bandwidths, and so as of right now, so like county highway, they have a high band channel, but it's not on repeater, so say if, you know, Colby Nail needs to get a hold of the south highway garage, it's not going to reach, and to get that put on repeater would be exponentially more expensive than to do this, so. These radios are great, they're relatively inexpensive, again, this will be providing law enforcement, fire, EMS, coroner, prosecutor, county highway, almost everybody with these radios, it will also be used as an emergency backup option in case the eight hundred megahertz system goes down.
Do they work even if you don't have cell signal?
Yes, yep, so the only thing is, is that there's a fifty dollar fee per radio every year, so it's, I mean, it's relatively inexpensive for what you're getting.
So how many radios?
Yeah, how many radios?
It's probably going to be up to eighty radios is what we're going to be purchasing, that'll provide all the fire departments with them, as well as all the county highway crews.
Like a few at each department?
Yes, yes.
I mean, because I mean, if you got twenty on each department, there's eighty there on four departments.
These are kind of designed to be an emergency backup, so each fire department, I figured out, would get five, you know, sheriff's department would get five, you know, X, Y, Z, the county highway would be getting the most of them, so that way if they have all their crew out, you know, they can all be able to communicate with either the county highway garage, or the foreman, or something of that nature, especially if they're plowing snow and everything like that, as of right now, you know, like county highway, they use their cell phones, so it's more convenient than using the high band channel that they currently have, and in doing so, I'll be able to turn that high band channel into something else, I don't know what yet.
Does fire still use high band for backup?
Yes.
I mean, they dispatch on it.
Yep, yep, so they still have access to it also, the benefit of these radios, like the tabletop exercise I went to in Terre Haute a couple of months ago for anybody in the Department of Homeland Security, so if high fiber goes under a terrorist attack, or is hacked into in any way, shape, or form, the eight hundred megahertz system that everybody hears out in scanner land, that is compromised, we can't use that anymore. These radios that work off of their own frequency and their own network, they will be secure from high fiber. These aren't, these aren't meant to be primary radios, the county highway may use them as primary radios, or if the fire departments do a training or something of that, they're, it's basically just a private talk room is all it is.
Who monitors the dispatch?
Dispatch will have one in it, yes.
So these are handheld radios?
Yep.
It would be good for emergencies. And for the highway.
I don't have to rely on cell service.
How often does something like this have to be replaced?
I'm sorry?
How often would something like this need to be replaced?
Hopefully never, other than maybe every four to five years, batteries may need to be replaced.
I personally think that eventually, like what you're, you and I are used to in eight hundred megahertz talk groups and stuff, will ultimately be replaced with some new generation of communications. And this stuff will become obsolete, everything will become obsolete, you'll be using, you know, like your watch or something, talk to somebody, whatever.
I do that now.
Being an implant.
It's come, I mean, Verizon's working on it desperately, I think, to come up with a, it's like a first response type network, that's specific to.
And they're gearing more towards what this company, they're called Rapid Radios, if you guys want to look them up or something, you know, do your own research on them, but it's a.
Now, the sheriff's department does, like, so it's, the fire departments have high band, which it was the old system back in the day, it was like a two-way radio, and if you're too far away, it doesn't work type thing, and then later it became eight hundred megahertz when CSEP or Newport Chemical Depot came up with all that, the statewide network, it's eight hundred megahertz repeater system, that's nice, but ultimately that stuff will go away, and like I said, there will be some new technology come along, this is kind of an in-between, because I think like fire departments can still use high band.
Correct, they still do.
The highway, highway department, they do, but can't reach.
Correct.
And sheriff's department doesn't have high band, I mean, it's point-to-point.
They have, they have high band, nine one one bought high band portals for them.
But if, but if that's just running off straight radio power, it's not going to make it from one end to the other, so this is like a pretty good idea for the length of the campaign.
The way that Rapid Radio put it to me, and if you look at their commercials and stuff, they've had people using these radios, obviously, hopefully we'll never need this, but say I have to go to a training in Elbow, Montana, and I take this radio with me, and somebody needs to get a hold of me, it'll, I'll be able to communicate with them that far away.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mr. Somerville, to approve an additional forty thousand dollars from the E nine one one fund for radio maintenance and upkeep, all those, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify with standing aye, all opposed, take no, additional is true.
Thank you.
I think you're next.
You're next again.
You're still up, you're still up, all right, our next one is also from, from, from EMA, this one is out of Fund ninety-one oh three, the county certified shares, they're asking for twenty-five thousand dollars for repairs and maintenance for the AEDs.
So we received a ten thousand dollar grant from Apex Solar, we asked for them to fund the whole project, but they gave us ten thousand, this will be to replace the very aged AEDs for law enforcement in the county, and then next year, I have a verbal promise and email promise from D.C. Energy, that they will fund the whole project to replace all the fire department's AEDs. So these will bring everything up to date, they'll have the same AEDs that the ambulance crews will have, so if they need to swap and go, or, you know, whatever it may be, and the batteries are also much cheaper to replace on the new ones compared to the old ones.
So we're going to purchase what brand?
I'm sorry?
What brand are we purchasing?
I, to be completely honest with you, I don't know, I haven't seen that yet, this was something that Mark started, and I haven't seen the brand of them yet.
I don't know if it's changed or not, but recent, in recent times, it's been solved.
That sounds right, that sound, don't quote me on that.
Yeah, me either, but I mean, it's, because I haven't touched it for a while, four years.
I'll make a motion to approve twenty-five thousand.
I'll second that.
I have a motion for Mrs. Furry, a second for Mr. Costello, to approve twenty-five thousand dollars additional appropriation for repairs and maintenance out of this, for AEDs, out of the county certified shares, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify with standing aye, all opposed, take no.
What are you going to do with the old?
So the old ones, they'll still be used, we're actually going to put them up in commonly populated areas, like we were going to give one to a thousand trails, been talking to Tim Wilson about installing an AED box at the grandstands at the Huga Park, and then the AED itself, unless there's an event, will be kept in the firehouse, so that way they can transport it back and forth.
So how many old ones we looking at, B and O, can you give that number to me later?
I can, yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Next additional appropriation is from Circuit Court, Judge Reed is also here this evening, he's asking for three thousand dollars additional for interpreter. There is more Spanish-speaking defendants this year, and they've asked for a transfer than this also, which will get to one of the transfers, with possible additional funds needed for next year, which we'll have to do in January if that's the case.
No hablo español?
Pardon?
No hablo español?
Chris Reed, Circuit Court, I'm willing to answer any questions, what we've run into is this year, interpreter cost has been up, we try to use, you do everything by Zoom, it normally costs about around three hundred dollars per hearing to do it by Zoom, if they come to court, in which this is only a matter of time until it happens, if we have a trial, it is mandatory that the interpreter does come to court, and then we're talking anywhere a day of two thousand, a week of ten thousand, because they are mandatory court, certified interpreters to the Indiana Supreme Court, we can't get around that. We've tried to move funds around, and we have exhausted everything within the category, and that is one of the things, kind of two things, here you mentioned the appropriation, the transfer, we're transferring from the postage and dues and subscriptions, trying to transfer three thousand to the interpreter, one of the things is here, I currently am looking at, I'm currently looking at bills for eighteen hundred dollars, that we don't have the money to pay right now without the transfers, that the transfer from postage and dues and subscriptions would allow us to pay those, it'll allow a little bit more, we thought the last bill was going to be higher than what it is, so the last bill just come in today, and we don't know that it covers everything. The additional appropriation would definitely get us through the end of the year, but the thing is, we are required to have, if, and to give you an example, if where some of these have occurred is traffic stop on sixty-three reckless driving, where from ninety to a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty mile per hour, they're pulled over, I have to do an initial hearing on them, and I have to have an interpreter. The, one of the things was, and the Supreme Court may be bringing it back, there was what was considered called the language line, that we could log into by Zoom, but that was cut by the state, so the courts do not have access to that. Therefore, for any preliminary hearings, I can use the, I can have an interpreter log on, that is a certified interpreter, and that's what's costing about three hundred dollars a hearing. We try to get the hearings as close together as possible, we did three hearings in one day, the couple, three weeks ago, it appears under those circumstances, that the bill was a little bit less, because we had them all together, but unfortunately, the law requires that a person that is arrested on a warrant list, we have certain timelines we have to go by, and the court has to bring them, they have to be brought before the court within a reasonable period of time, so I can't say, okay, I can't hold initial hearings, I can't basically get a bunch of initial hearings together and do that, because I can't, I can't set the time off. So that is more than you probably want to hear on that, the one thing was, and I know that I mentioned, I just wanted to put it on everybody's radar, the interpreters, I have it set for thirty-five hundred next year, we're already at fifty-one hundred this year, so there, I just wanted to put it on everybody's radar, I don't know, it'd be nice if the thirty-five hundred, but I'm just, with the costs that we've had now with this, I don't know that thirty-five hundred will make us through next year, and that's what is budgeted in this period of time, so the other thing was as well, on the part of appropriation, we did do a transfer for psychological evaluations through doctors under the statute, that somebody claims that they're mentally incompetent with which to, they can't assist or counsel with their defense, or they do not understand what is going on either, at the time of which they're being prosecuted, at the time the crime occurred, under the statute for level six felonies, we have to, if the court deems that they need to have a psychological evaluation, we have to appoint one doctor, as far as, we still have some outstanding bills on that. I hope the fifteen thousand with the transfers, the fifteen thousand that we had with the transfers will get us through the end of the year, but if it's above a level six, we have to have two, at a minimum of two psychologists or psychiatrists do an evaluation, and then make a determination and bring it back to the court, those cost anywhere, the cheapest one we've had is two thousand this year, the highest one we've had is twenty-eight hundred and seventy-five per doctor. We have two more coming in this year that we know of for bills, we're hoping that with the transfer funds in there, that we can get those paid, but unfortunately, it may be coming back before you again, if we don't have enough, and the thing is, is we spent over the fifteen thousand this year, so next year we have fifteen thousand, I didn't increase that light item, I may have to come back before you again, I just kind of want to, I know we can't address that right now this evening, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads up, and believe me, these are circumstances that are outside my control, they're statutory in nature, if I, if it is found that they are potentially, don't understand what's going on, and we have to have hearings on that to make a determination, it's not just something that comes before me, and I said, okay, we're going to do it, matter of fact, I have, make sure that the attorneys that file for competency evaluation follow the statutory guidelines in going forward in this, because if they, if you don't follow statutory guidelines, everybody can come in and potentially claim that, and then you're spending several thousand on each doctor, so I basically give you kind of an idea of where we're at on this, and what the background is to it, as far as the, for the interpreters, the additional appropriation, the transfer, and then as far as hopefully having enough in the psychological, for psychological doctors exams. And then as far as hopefully having enough in the, um, psychological, for psychological doctors exams and the other line items to make it through the end of the year. Are there any questions?
Are these people that are here generally illegal? I mean, you can't speak English?
It's, it is a combination, okay? Some of them do have ice holes on them. Some of them are, are, some of them are here legally, some of them are here illegally. The interesting thing about this is, is, is under the case law, a lot of times they can speak a, or understand a certain amount of English. But under the circumstances, what the court standard is, is when you get into the legal aspect of it, then being able to understand the legal wording and the legal aspect of our criminal justice system. And even though they may be able to speak it and understand it to a certain extent, you still have to make that determination, uh, as far as having an interpreter. So sometimes, sometimes, uh, I do have ones that come in and they answer my question before the interpreter interprets it. Because I ask the question or make the statement, the interpreter then interprets it to them, then they respond to it, then the interpreter tells me what's going on. Sometimes they will respond beforehand, which I understand they, they do understand a certain amount of English that they've picked up since then.
Is that allowed? Are they allowed to do that before?
As far as?
Answer, is it legal to accept their answer if the interpreter hasn't been involved?
The interpreter, then, they, they will jump the gun sometimes. And then the interpreter, uh, will, will verify, um, what, what is said by the court. So the, the answer, Mr. Somerville, to your question is, it, it, there's some of both. And so, you know, it, and I will say this, I have been lucky. There's, there's some, the other thing is to, even if I have a family member that can interpret, I can't utilize that in court because I can't, I can't understand what the interpreter's saying. So I don't know what promises or whether they're specifically stating to me, stating to the defendant what their question, what my question is, and giving back to me their answer. We do have some cases that have helped some is, um, attorneys that do speak Spanish, and I can allow that to a certain extent. But when it comes to any type of evidentiary hearing, I have to have a court certified interpreter. Or otherwise, if later down the road they decide they want to contest, um, the conviction or sentence, then it would, it would be overturned by the court.
We also had you under new business for the same thing.
Yeah.
So I assumed it kind of all went together.
Yeah, it, it did.
I just want to make sure that there was anything else. Well, since you were already up here.
Nothing else. I just wanted to make sure I covered all bases and let everybody know.
I just want to make sure you told us everything you.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the 3,000 out of general fund for interpreter for the judge.
You'll second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Furry, a second from Mr. Boas. Is there any further discussion? I have a motion from Mrs. Furry, a second from Mr. Boas, for the $3,000 additional appropriation from the general fund going into the circuit court line item for the interpreter. All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Additional is approved.
And believe me, I will try that additional appropriation. Hopefully, I don't have to use it.
We understand.
But a little bit of cushion, uh, helps to make sure I don't have to come back before you next month.
I understand that. Yeah, and we're this close to the end of the year. So if you don't use it, it just reverts back.
Correct, correct. So, um, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you. So does that mean, since I covered everything on the new business?
Um, the rest are in the transfers section.
Okay.
But I mean.
I'll, I'll stay here. I'm, I'm good.
So hopefully we're not too much longer. I don't think we'll have too many more questions if there were none. All right. The next additional. It's not the last one. Is area plan. The additional is in the amount of $50,000 into professional services. This is as per the Vermillion County UDO, the solar power plant standards articles, 5.65 SPO14, I don't know why. Special review reimbursement. So basically Apex had submitted their paperwork, and with it, they submitted their $50,000 fee. And so then we are thus using that $50,000 to have that paperwork reviewed by an attorney, correct?
Attorney and engineer.
Attorney and engineer. Okay, so essentially, they gave us the money. We need to use that money, but we have to appropriate into line item so we can use it. I'll make a motion. Okay.
And what we don't use, we get back to that.
Okay.
So, and then go on back.
Yep, we just can't use it until we put in the line. The line.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Furry, a second from Mr. Weir, for the $50,000 into area plan professional services. Any further discussion?
Thank you, Tony, for the explanation. That was very good.
Appreciate that.
Very helpful.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Additional is approved. That is not tax money. All right. And our last additional this evening is from the coroner. He is here to ask for an additional $7,500 for autopsies. Says a high number of deaths. Hello. Welcome this evening.
I was young corner. So as of right now, in autopsy budget, I have $1,100 left. Average autopsy right now is 1675 with the pathology fee in the hospital usage of the suite. I haven't done 14 autopsies this year, but I had the $9,800 bill that was charged from earlier this, the first year from the previous three years from the regional hospital.
Was that like their fault that they sent like late? Because I saw like Vigo County had that too.
Vigo County, Monroe County, Vigo County, I gave $5,000.
So it wasn't like we just didn't pay or didn't have it?
Right, no, it was, it was strictly, they had not submitted the bills for three years.
That's what, okay.
So it left me short, obviously. So this year so far, I've had 43 call offs from the sheriff's department for, for deaths. We called the hospital eight times. I've had one from the, I've had 52 deaths so far this year. I've autopsied 14. So I'm just asking for enough to maybe get a subpoena the rest of the year. Hopefully I won't use all of that naturally it goes back. But at least to cover, to cover the cost that I have. Because right now, I don't have enough to cover the cost of the autopsy.
Autopsies are just, it's questionable.
So, yeah, suspicious. I mean, if, if it's an unwitness death or an accident, a suicide, anything like that, then it could be questionable or bring question into how they died. Or if I'm not sure, then we'll autopsy. Like I said, I've had 52 deaths, I've only autopsied 14, so we've been lucky.
I think it's a reasonable request for something that we have to do. So I would make a motion to approve the additional $7,500 for, to the coroner's budget.
I'll second.
I have a motion for Mr. Costello, a second from Ms. Brown, for an additional appropriation of $7,500 into the coroner's autopsy. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Additional is approved. Thank you. Hopefully the year slows down for you. That is the end of our additionals tonight. Moving along to transfers. All right, the first transfer is also for the coroner. He is transferring $500 from training into supplies.
The explanation is incorrect. I called him.
I didn't say what's going on.
Yeah, no, it's wrong.
That was the old, that's an old. What is the explanation on that one?
I don't know. I filled it out, I'm going to transfer the money out of training into.
Supplies.
When I called you, I think you said body bags.
Body bags, gloves.
Okay.
Obviously it's been a busy year.
It's not for engineering for the highway.
No, it's not for engineering.
It's okay. It's just the form didn't get switched to.
No, I noticed it was wrong on the form, so I called it.
Yeah, yeah. So basically it's to cover anything, uh, you use body bags for everything.
Okay.
Gloves, you know, PPU, things of that nature.
Okay. Um, it will require a vote tonight since it's a change in series. I'll make a motion to transfer the 500 out of training into supplies.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Furry, a second from Mr. Boas, to transfer $500 from the coroner's training fund, sorry, line item to the line item of supplies. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Transfer is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. All right. The next transfer is for Circuit Court, and Judge Reed already explained that to us. He is asking to transfer $2,000 from postage, $1,000 from dues and subscriptions, for a total of $3,000 into the interpreter.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion for Mr. Weir, a second for Mr. Costello, to transfer 2,000 for postage, 1,000 for dues and subscriptions, for a total of $3,000 into the interpreter in the circuit court. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Transfer is approved. Our next transfer is the auditor. He is asking to transfer $5,507 from professional services into his part-time. Right, the part-time employee, instead of paying someone for professional services. Once again, this will require a vote this evening. This is similar to what we did with the assessor earlier in the year, where instead of hiring it out, they just kept their part-time person.
Does that leave, you mean, what that leaves of professional services? Is that everything I just?
Is that like the remaining balance in there?
I didn't do.
Okay.
It did, we didn't wipe it out.
Do you, Ron, do you expect, expect anything else out of professional services for the year?
No.
Okay.
Is this a calculated?
I'll go ahead.
No, I was going to make a motion.
I was going to say, is that a calculated amount to finish the year?
Yeah. You make the motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the $5,507 from professional services to part-time.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mrs. Furry, a second from Mr. Boas, to transfer $5,507 from professional services to part-time for the auditor's budget. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, take no. Transfer is approved. And the following are reporting only. So if there's any questions on these, there's a transfer of $336 from the extension travel line item due into dues and subscriptions. The next reporting only is the surveyor. He's transferring $65.38 from surveyor supplies into office supplies. The next transfer is a total of $17,011.28 for the courthouse. $8,000 on electric, 500 for travel, 3,800 from natural gas, $4,711.28 into HVAC maintenance. This was to cover the remaining work that Alice had done on the building repairs. The probation department is transferring $100 from repair and maintenance into postage. Uh, the predate, predate, I can't tell, I'm sorry. Probation department is also transferring a total of $1,000, 600 from maintenance agreement fees and 400 from criminal records into training and conference for their APPA training expense. It is that time of year for transfers, isn't it? The health department is transferring $2,000 from their part-time nurse. They're transferring that into the social security Medicare perfect overtime. Same series.
Back to the courthouse.
What, you have two other courthouses?
Back to it.
Oh, back to the courthouse. Okay.
That was the bid price, was it not, for the, for the repairs?
That was, they added down the ceiling of the windows. When they got into it, the ceiling was bad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I didn't know that.
The next transfer is from redevelopment. They are transferring $5,890 from their lease into professional services to cover the baked utility employees for continuing disclosure. The next transfer is prosecutor. He is transferring $2,000 from postage, $218.37 for travel, for a total of $2,218.37 into equipment and maintenance to pay for software services. And the commissioners are transferring. Ah, there it is. $5,000 from unsafe buildings into email hosting for the courthouse. This is for the charges for the rest of the year. And then the last transfer this evening, nope, I lied. I didn't want to do this one, sorry. Circuit Court is transferring a total of $3,000, 300 from court expenses, $1,500 from conferences and seminars, $500 from equipment and maintenance, $700 for pop, depositions, for a total of $3,000 in the exam by appointed physicians. Judge Reed hit on that. All right, and one more reporting only. In the extension office, they are transferring $95 from travel into dues and subscriptions. Any questions? All right, moving along to old business. We have none. Okay. New business.
Prejudice report.
Oh, wait, we skipped that.
No, you did. That's right.
Sorry. Sorry, folks. Treasures report. Any questions on that? I was moving right along. Any questions on treasures? No? Okay. No old business, new business. Uh, we have a request from Sheriff Hope Camp. For some time. Good evening.
Good evening. Need additional funding for overtime where we've gone in the red. I should have made, been here at the last month's meeting and brought it up then, but I kind of missed the window to get on the agenda. I checked today, our call volume, uh, today, we are 2,007 calls ahead of what we were on this date in 2024. Our population's up, court cases are out, investigations up, uh, inmates are up. So transporting them to and from places is obviously increased. It's a combination of things, actually, I guess.
Okay. Do you have an additional request to file for next month then?
I'm thinking maybe 30. I'm hoping we can make that work, because I think we're about 15 in the hole right now.
Okay. Have you pulled that additional out yet?
Have we? Okay, I can remember if we did or not.
Okay. So I just want to make sure we got it advertised for December since we're.
Okay.
Even if we did the additional meeting, it would have to be 10 days. So if we don't, if we do that additional meeting before, we wouldn't be able to do it for then.
Okay.
It might be December before we can do it.
Okay.
I guess you could advertise it. And then if the meet, that meeting for the house or the ambulance station ends up being within the 10 days, you could add it.
Well, you have, you have to do the additional, the, the date on the additional has to be the date of the meeting.
Okay.
The initial date.
So there has to be one set before you can do it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I, I don't think it's a problem to go to December. It's already red.
We're already in the red?
Yeah, it's in the red.
It's in the red.
Yeah.
It's a few more weeks, right? It is Christmas time. Hello.
You can't take it out of your salary, just transfer.
I don't think so. I checked, I wouldn't let us do that.
Okay, just, just check.
That's an unapproved request.
Need for Christmas.
Yes.
Well, I guess. Just advertise it.
December before we can do anything.
Right, I understand.
Anybody have questions for Mike? Leave it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Next item in new business is Jimmy again, tornado sirens. Welcome back.
Jimmy, I wonder, I don't know if I can say that again, Ron. So I went to the commissioners' meeting last week, uh, tornado sirens over Ryan Kelly. It was a back turtle, but say, said the. I should have backed her a little bit, said, sent the council commissioners an email several weeks back at the state of the tornado sirens in Verane County. Um, I was actually incorrect, they're, they're older than 20 years old, and they're probably pushing about 30 years old now. So, people that were, you know, around here, you know, CSEP was a big thing back in the day, and CSEP inherited those from the, you know, United States Army from the chemical depot. They were actually VX sirens, and then they gave them to us. So these things are pushing 30 years old, they sit outside and, you know, 24/7, 365 days a year. And as of right now, I have some that don't work. And unfortunately, the, the price of things has obviously gone up for everything. So, uh, going through, we have 27 sirens. Uh, currently, we do have a, a good area of the north end of the county that's, that's not covered by tornado siren coverage. We have Riley'sburg, Gessie, 63 and 74 area. Um, the furthest north siren I have is actually in Perrysville, and it's basically attached to the firehouse. So I, I was hoping to try to get three more installed, um, so that way those areas would be covered, which would put us up to 30 sirens. Um, so that way the, the, the folks up there would have, would have tornado siren coverage in the event of a tornado. And then also to get the ones, basically to have them all gone through, they, they all need to be gone through. Mark O'Hara, the former EMA director, did a great job working with the money that he had, unfortunately, and, you know, the time that he was able to scrape together money to buy a solar panel to get one working, three more failed in the time that it took him to do that. So they're just, they're, they're, they've outlived their, long outlived their life expectancy. I currently have one tornado siren that sits in the pole barn in Keegah. The issue was, was trying to find a pole, uh, for it fit on, doesn't just fit on a standard telephone pole, it has to be specially cut. So trying to find that, trying to find the funds for that is why that one wasn't put up, but it, it's ready to be installed, it's been sitting there. Also, we have some that are in areas that are, you know, heavily shaded, so the solar panels don't get to do their job. I've worked with the town of Newport, I paid my bill for the year, and so the one on the east end of Market Street, instead of it being on a solar panel battery powered, be hooked up to auxiliary power, but turned the current battery, get that one back working. The dollar amount that I put in that is a, is a rough estimate going off of past invoices. And it is expensive. But that, in a, in a rough cost, that's what it may potentially cost to get all of these working in, three new ones installed. Obviously, the dollar amount, it would have to go out for bid, I said that in the commissioners' meeting, and people apparently listen to these meetings because I had about 13 different vendors trying to call me today, so. So, I mean, I will have to go out for bid, and when I asked the commissioners what they wanted me to do, they wanted me to come here and basically get your, get your guys' input on it to see where we would stand, uh, in trying to move forward.
Are there any grants?
To fix them, probably not, but to install new ones, probably. I would just have to look, um, but that would probably be towards the middle of next year by the time we got that going, which would probably be the SHSP grant or the anti-terrorism grant.
Okay.
And, uh, that, that only goes up to, I believe, $115,000.
$115?
I think so. I think, I think that was the limit this year, could change next year, obviously, but I think that was the limit this year.
What makes the siren so expensive? Because it says three sirens for $150,000, I guess, what's the expensive component? Is it the pole? Is it the actual siren?
All of it, but the size, they don't look like it, but the siren themselves is about the size of that pew. They're huge. They're not, and they're all made of metal. I mean, they have to be that big to be as loud as they are, I don't know if you've ever been right next to one when they go off, but it'll blow your eardrums out.
So did we have sirens before VX was in town?
No.
No? Okay.
Are these the special solar panels?
I'm sorry?
Are the solar panels special or something?
They're, they're specially designed for them, yes, and they're, they're an all-weather solar panel.
I thought all solar panels were all-weather.
It depends, sometimes you have commercial use, you have residential use, you have hobbyists, these, these are very commercial-grade, designed to be outside all the time. Some of them, because I, there are cheaper solar panels, but you're, you're going to pay, you're going to get cheaper if you pay cheaper for them. I can, I can guarantee that. And they're all so big, they're not, they're not small solar panels. When you look up at them, they look small, but when they're down on the ground, they're, they're actually expensive in size.
My personal recommendation is, is this is safety and it's something that I'd say is a passion. And I think for the remain county residents, especially up north, we need to do what we can. We're not anywhere to say we're, we can, tornado proof anything, but we need to give everybody as much notification as they can get, so.
So with the project being over the 300. But since it's kind of, one of them is just replacement of the panels, do we have to bid that out since that's over $150?
It's the project cost.
That, that's what, yeah, they said it would just be a total project cost.
Even though it's not by the same person, like possibly doing the same work?
Yeah. That, when, so, I, I don't mean to interrupt, when, when you do that, you do run into some issues.
Okay. So it will be the same person doing all of it?
That would be preferred, yes, because someone's going to install this part, and then the other company may want to install other parts that aren't compatible with that one, so.
Okay, didn't realize that.
I'd like to look at the grant as well, though.
Oh, yeah, we need to.
Absolutely, yeah, the, so I, like, we applied for the SHSP grant this year, I won't know anything about it until January.
Okay.
And then roughly around October, September, October-ish is when it opens back up.
Just the lead times concern?
Yeah, the, the lead time on all this stuff too is also a concern, so like this year, we scraped together line items, Tori EMA bought two sets of solar panels to try to get two more sirens working. And they're looking at maybe April, May-ish by the time those solar panels come in.
I feel like Mark would kind of, let's see, his budget of the year and transfer it all to buy a solar panel.
Yes, that's exactly what he'd do.
How many bids did you get on this?
I'm sorry?
How many bids?
I have not put it out for bid yet, that, that's, I was, I was told to come try to get the, the input of you guys first, before I did put it out for bid.
Are these units compatible with each other? Are they independent sites that are just signaled by a radio transmission to operate or?
Sure, the best way to put it is, yes, they, they completely independently operate, but they communicate with, um, I can't remember the name of the, the computer software, it operates off of a, a radio transmission. They operate independently, and then that's the hub, so it sends out a signal and then it kicks it back.
So these new three, the three new ones obviously aren't going to be the same exact model we make as the ones we've had.
Yep.
But they'll still function, so by that same token, how many, so if, if this money's appropriated, but there's 10 that still work fine or whatever, don't need anything, are you going to upgrade those automatically anyway, or just wait till they fail? Or how's that?
The sirens themselves is basically, it just depends on the vendor. So like the ones we have now, we have a lot of Whelan, and if I go buy a brand-new Whelan, it's just brand-new, but Whelan hasn't changed their design for 20-something years. So like the guy, one of the people who called me today said, hey, I'm an American signal dealer, everything will still be able to communicate altogether. And for the price point from my research that I've done, they differ pocket change in the amount of how much they cost. But when, when, when you're talking about such a high-dollar amount, it's essentially pocket change, but.
I, I was just kind of wondering if, does this is a, like, fix everything all at once?
Yes.
Proposals?
Yes.
It's not just, well, we have five that are fine, we're not going to mess with those.
No.
Everything gets fixed.
My goal was to have them all gone through, um, so that way hopefully for the next, you know, 15 to 20 years, we, we won't have to deal with this again. Um, other than changing batteries and solar panels and stuff like that.
How long do the solar panels last?
Roughly.
30 years?
30.
No.
Well, unfortunately.
Mike, did I miss that?
He said this is.
Three to four years ago. I mean, they just, it depends. Um, depends on how much sunlight they get all the time and X, Y, Z.
So they, they are currently.
They don't sound too special then, do they?
So the, the ones we have are working, we just need at least new batteries for them right now?
Uh, no, I currently have some that don't work.
Okay.
Yep.
And we never have any in those areas, like, we just never put sirens in?
I, I hear nothing.
The original.
Yeah, all the, all the sirens that are up right now are all the original VX sirens.
The sirens for the, that were installed by the operators or the government at the time, it, it had to do with VX propagation and leak, it didn't have anything to do with weather.
Right.
So if VX escaped, here's where it's going to go, models were predictable.
I found, I found an old map, like when they first started, there was only five, and they went around the plant, and they all faced out away from the plant to let the public know, and then they were like, wow, this is very nasty stuff, so they put it everywhere. The sirens that we had, like the, the sirens that Park County has were actually VX sirens.
They were VX too.
Yep, and they had a lot more, but I believe they have six or eight of them, they took most of theirs down.
Yeah.
So do they have any sirens then?
Park County?
For weather?
Park County?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, they, they did the same thing we did, the ones that they did keep, they kept and converted into tornado sirens.
Gotcha.
So does Noah actuate those or?
No, so they can either be set off at the, um, EOC in Clinton or the dispatch center, sheriff's office, and they're active.
That's how they're activated?
They're activated if the National Weather Service puts out a tornado warning, that's the only time we activate these, is a tornado.
But they're activated by us.
Yeah.
By us.
Are they, is it all or nothing, or do we separate north and south?
No. We set, we set them all off to avoid confusion. Even though it may be sunshiny bright in Perrysville, we don't, if a tornado is on the ground, we don't know where it's going to go, so.
What's the range? I don't know, it gets here.
Like audible range, it depends on where you are, depends on the elevation. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it honestly, um, I know that like the one at the jail, that's right outside the jail, I can hear that one in Newport. Down in Newport, and then the one on the west end of town, I mean, obviously, it'll wake you up.
But what about the pro, what about the, don't we use an alert system now that we recently implemented?
The text might go?
I mean, for, wouldn't that be prudent to use that as well?
We can, I just have to see if that's in, in correspondence with the iPaws system, because we only get so many characters a year to send out. But if it's iPaws related, then yes, I can send.
I mean, you could get text messages, instead of using our system to pay for it, maybe encourage them to sign up for like Channel 2 or 10?
Yes.
It's free? Because I mean, that does the same thing.
Also, for weather-related things, I, I was going to make an announcement in public comment, I can do it here real quick. So Verane County EMA partnered with the Indiana Weather Network, it's an independently-owned meteorologist group, and they are on YouTube, it's completely free, um, you can get on YouTube and subscribe. Thanks to Perrysville Fire Chief Brent Lewis and Black Diamond Fire Chief Dakota Wilson, they bought live weather cameras, it'll be streamed on their YouTube all the time. And then they also gave one to Verane County EMA to put on the radio tower at the jail.
I saw they were asking for, like, the coverage.
Yep, so we, we partnered with them, and then also, um, they're going to be trying to do, uh, like Taylor Weather reporting for Verane County. It hasn't cost the taxpayers anything, so, and it won't, because it's spread on YouTube.
I guess what are you looking for from us then?
I, I, I just need a little bit of guidance that you want me to get. Do you want to put it out for bid and then come back to you guys with what I think's the best, or give them all to you, or give them all to the commissioners? I don't really know the process from that point.
I think go to the commissioners.
Commissioners will have to do the bid, and then if you've got some, like, definite pricing on it, then we can say, okay, maybe we have to do it in stages, or since, I mean, it is a large amount, that maybe we get the things that have to be done, and then if the grants come open or not, or if you maybe find some other grant.
Sure.
Or if we can do it all at one time, we can kind of have a better idea, just without knowing an exact cost of things, it's hard for us to say.
Sure.
Exactly what.
Are they considered property of the county as far as assets go for the commissioners?
So commissioners will have to do all of that. I mean, but once you get firm numbers and stuff, let us know.
Okay.
So that would.
And then, do you guys want, like, a project timeline, do you guys want to put a timeline on this or a deadline?
Realistically, we're looking at any time in '26 now, because we don't want to, we don't want to do an additional appropriation in '25 and then not have it.
It'll expire.
It'll expire December 31st for you, so you'll be doing it again.
Sure.
So, I mean, we're into January already.
Okay.
Realistically for us.
All right, well, thank you.
You may just add one thing, I don't know if, how, you know, bids are one thing, but could he possibly get requests for proposals?
Yeah.
From vendors, say, can you analyze our system and tell us what we need?
I, I actually have one, um, it was a company that contacted me today. So I don't know if I need to put in an additional appropriation for this, but they said for $2,700, they turned us $100 a siren to come through, and, because we already have a siren contractor. Um, they're supposed to be going through all the sirens, but this other company said for $2,700, we will also come do it, which I think would be kind of nice to be able to compare the two. And they're, they said that they would start at the south end and do all of this for $2,700 to be able to know exactly what's wrong. Anyone needs to be fixed.
The other company did the same, did they already do that?
I'm sorry?
I said, did the other company already do that, did you do the proposal?
No, they have not.
Okay. So this was the first time having done.
Correct. All of them.
So once you get a, you know, an idea of what specifically needs done, at least, you could then put out bid for equipment.
Sure.
And, and later to install or whatever.
Right, and this is the same company that has offered the, to inspect all the, also does all this too. I, I don't want to currently, I don't, I'm not trying to take business away from my current provider.
Yeah.
But it may be, you know, they're kind of, to my knowledge, they're kind of a smaller operation, I could be completely wrong, but.
It could be worse too, once you get a proposal.
How often do you test them or check them?
They do a silent test every day at 8:00 in the morning, and then every Wednesday, they do the Westminster Chimes at noon.
I live in a block.
Yep, completely.
If something's wrong.
Yep.
And you don't have $2,700 in the budget?
I'm sorry?
Do you have $2,700?
I, I, to be completely honest with you, I'd have to look, I've transferred some.
I mean, I would, I would recommend it, but that's just my.
Say, if not, Commissioner Ford, see what's stacked together. Or, let's see. I think I'll think on that, see if there's anywhere else. We can always look around. See who's got what left.
All right. So come back.
Support?
Yep.
Yeah. Can you work with commissioners and find out on bids and stuff and let us know?
Okay. Yes. Yep. And then, I mean, obviously, you know, they come back and say, hey, you know, two more, you know, that's, that's on the company that comes and does the survey.
Yeah, we'll have to figure that one out later.
Right. Yeah.
We need batteries for all of them, just like AEDs.
Yep.
So there's no other, it's not possible that someone could come along and say, hey, we've got a different system that's way less money, that works better, or what, that's, these things are all pretty much the same, right, as far as?
To my knowledge, I know that like in major, major metropolitan areas, they have basically, basically just loudspeakers. And they, so like, say downtown Indianapolis, you know, they're, they have, I don't even know if they have tornado sirens, but they're small loudspeakers, and they put them on all the street corners, and they just send out the same audible sound as what these do. We're very rural, and we have a very interesting topography in Verane County, north end's, you know, mostly flat. So I have a good feeling, you know, the siren in Gessie may be able to be heard out by where, you know, Penny lives, to be completely honest with you, because of how flat it is. But in the areas of Hillsdale and Dana and stuff like that, it's.
Brendan.
Brendan.
Perrysville. I don't hear Perrysville.
Yeah.
I'm a block from the one in Perryville, so I hear it clearly, very clearly.
So, some of the people on, on Facebook, you know, in Clinton, so they kind of want one like on every, I think in every yard, I think is what they said is what they want.
Um, we're live.
But the, uh.
It's all right.
The, the idea is, you know, they're expensive, and to be completely honest, you know, the, these are designed, they're not supposed to be for people in their homes to be able to hear, they're designed for people outside, and everybody else outside.
Yeah, because part of the original CSEP, and it's understood that, you know, like, it would be nice to have one at close intervals.
Sure.
Yeah, but it's unaffordable, it's impossible. But they did, and there may be some of those buildings still, there used to be these blue boxes that they would sit on a desk and have a little antenna, and they would do the same thing, so you, you don't want to be around those either, because they're loud.
The.
I just said, this one here, I heard it.
To be completely, we're, we're really blessed to have, a lot of counties in, doing my research, a lot of counties do not.
Do those still work too, by the way, those, those units?
I'm sorry?
Those little desktop units?
Yes, they're off every Wednesday, 11:15.
Well, there's one right by the water.
Yep.
So I was, I guess my point was, is it possible that if someone wanted, like, say, the city of Clinton or town of Dane has said, we'd like to buy. So I guess my point was, is it possible that if someone wanted, like, say, the city of Clinton or Town of Dana said, we'd like to buy a smaller version of what you're getting for Town, what work could it be made to?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
So, you know, I guess if Clinton City wanted to buy twenty-five to put throughout the city, then they, it would still function with the, I don't know how it all interfaces, but I guess that's.
No, absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that is the end of our new business. We are at public comment. Any other comments?
Yes, I have a comment.
Yeah.
We need to advertise or put out there our.
The boards.
Board appointments.
Board appointments for next year.
Yes. Glad you remembered. Thank you. We have openings on the park board, there's a nine-one-one. I think it's a really, and then alcohol and beverage board. Redevelopment.
And I don't remember, were we, this year on pages, remember how she switched them?
Do you know she switched them?
If it's, if it's us, then we need it, if it's not, then it's the commissioners.
So somebody has a PTO board, if you're interested in being on the PTO board, you can apply, whether it be the commissioners or the council, someone has an open seat. But all the board appointments are on the county's website, there is an application, please fill that out. Have the commissioners set a date for their applications to be returned yet, you know?
Don't think so.
Because we normally do that at December meetings.
They moved their December meeting to.
To the ninth?
Or the eighth? Yep, two nights in a row.
Just spend the night.
I would assume theirs would be on the night.
Okay, I was pretty sure.
You guys are on the odd, council's on the odd.
So the commissioners will have a PTO, okay. Yeah, that's good. Yeah. December third? Say, applications are submitted by December third, that gives us a couple of business days to get them looked at, if there's questions, you follow the meeting.
And you have duplicates for the same position?
See, that's, maybe not.
Who is it? Have more than one person apply, yeah, that'd be great.
It would be.
Have choices.
Choices are great.
And now those, the email, does that come to you now, Ron?
Oh, they already did, okay. Good, people are ahead of it.
Public knows.
Okay, so you're getting, you're getting those, Ron?
Okay, there's several of those boards are every year, so I think the people who are on them automatically know, like, you know, it's coming due, most likely. But yes, all the boards are listed on there, I think it's a drop-down menu, you select which one you're applying for. Please fill out the application if you're interested, and return those, submit those by December third.
That's all we had.
Thank you, I'm glad you reminded me. Anything else? Nothing? All right, well, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Motion, is there a second?
No second.
Thank you very much.